Okay, if you wouldn't mind.
No, I don't mind at all. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting has been recorded and may be broadcasted over the Newbury Public Access, over Newbury Public Access television. The town of Newbury, in response to COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Newbury Health Agent, Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and the steps communities can take to prevent the spread. As such, all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 38 Amendment, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom and will be aired on local access cable channel nine. It can be viewed on demand at www.tncTV.org or on the Newbury's YouTube page, in the Newbury Channel. Let's see if there's anything else. No. That's it.
Hi. I think I forgot to put the director's report on the agenda, but the next item is approval of minutes.
All right, from November 20th, meeting was called to order via Zoom at 10:00 a.m. In attendance, Dick Passari, Margaret Grimes, Teri Leters, Alex Burke, Dick Raven, Erin We Met, and Jean Eckerly. The board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the October 30th meeting. Jean presented her director's report, and Erin reviewed the monthly statistics and provided an update on the Story Walk project. The board voted unanimously to support the NTL FY22 Action Plan to be submitted to the, is it the MV as in Victor Elsie, or the MB? I get those mixed up.
The what to be submitted?
Well, I wrote MVLC, but I know there's also MB as in Boy Elsie. And I get those mixed up. So which one is it?
But which one, what is it worth submitting? I lost that part.
Oh, FY22 Action Plan.
Oh, yes, MB, Mass Board of Library Commissioners.
Got it. Okay. The next meeting will be Friday, December 18th at 9:00 a.m. via Zoom. Meeting adjourned at 10:46 a.m.
A motion to approve, somebody else should probably take this job on.
I move that we accept the minutes as read.
All in favor?
Done.
Minutes have been approved.
All right, so should I start with the director's report?
Please.
Okay. We've had some issues with the heat not coming on. It does seem to have resolved itself. The boiler just came on when it wanted to. We seem to be stable with that. However, this morning Fred Doherty is coming at 10:00 to check in because there is heat being told by the computer to go to the community room, but for whatever reason, it's not getting there. I'm kind of ad-libbing off the director's report here. So that will be at 10:00 today. Our cleaner Fred Davis is supposed to connect with the fire chief for training on using a fogging machine in the building. Tracy Blaze has been doing it at Town Hall, but recommended we have our cleaners do it. This was one of the things that slipped through communication-wise in the beginning. Apparently, we were supposed to be doing this all along, but nobody ever directed us to. So.
Does it mean that Tracy herself is actually doing that?
Yeah. They wanted to have a staff, well, because the DPW is still doing their cleaning. They don't have an outside vendor. So she felt, since we have an outside vendor, they should be doing it. Because they were all set to train one of us. And then when I reminded her that we have an outside vendor, she said, well, they really should be doing it. But we had not gotten any direction on that, so hopefully that's starting up.
So do you use a sound fogging machine? Do you have a whole separate one just for the library?
It's, I think it will be our own machine, so that's why somebody needs to be trained on it. I'm still a little unclear. I initially thought it was, excuse me, like electromagnetic thing that just went over mostly like the high-touch surfaces, which I think is what it is. But somebody mentioned that it could be more of an aerosol kind of thing. So I have to get more information on that, talk to Fred. Okay. Budget statistics, as I said, I said to KD on the way out the door on Tuesday, I know I'm going to forget the first thing I look for to do my work from home. And late Wednesday, that was what I needed, and it wasn't there. So I promise to get a better handle on this. And so I will try to do that data input this afternoon, if we're not too busy, and get that to you today. The latest would be tomorrow. So I apologize for that. Erin said this.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
You keep these documents in the cloud? Like as a Google Doc?
Yes, except for the invoices. So yes, they were all in the cloud. They were all in Dropbox, which has been extremely problematic for both Erin and I since we started this new stint at home. But the invoices themselves are here, and that's where I plug all the invoices into various columns on my spreadsheets, and that's what I didn't have. So I was going to try and reconstruct it from what I had, but I didn't have the invoices. So that will, that will improve, I promise. As I've told the staff, these next three weeks are just a perfect storm, including the fact that we got a storm yesterday. Between the Story Walk and the schedule changes and the holidays, everything's all over the place. So, you know, we're not really going to get into any kind of a groove with this until probably January, and then everything will probably change again. But that's where we are right now.
That's a good attitude, Jean.
I didn't have to.
I know, I have to do the same thing with my job.
Yeah, absolutely. Just when you think you've got a routine and a workflow, it all turns upside down.
Right, and when you think you've figured things out.
Right, exactly. And the workflow really got turned upside down this time because of how Town Hall is letting in one department a day. So that, that means we have to work around the accountants department and the treasurer's department in terms of when we get the payroll and the bills in. So that's why if Dick ever shows up today, he will be signing two, two different things. Did everybody get Erin's statistics spreadsheet?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't open it up and I didn't print it out, but she said she was going to try and bullet what was most important on it. So, any discussion on that? Okay.
The only thing that I noticed is that there still wasn't a way to track all the pickup.
All the what?
The curbside.
Curbside pickup.
Yeah. Other than scratch marks on a pad, it's frustrating. So we're gonna try and get started on that, especially if it looks like we're going to be doing nothing but curbside. We're gonna try and get a better handle on how to do that. We can, we can track how much circulation there is, but we can't track how many transactions there are unless we manually keep track somewhere, which is so easy to forget as you're going in and out the door and everything. But obviously, we would have to start a new routine, a new habit. I was gonna say something else about that, but I've forgotten. The Evolution of Christmas event for programming adult was held last week on Zoom. It was, it was good, it was a little dry, but he did try to make it interactive. But one of the other things that happened on the event was I lost my ability to do chat. In order for him to share, it's very convoluted, so I won't go into all of it. But in order for him to share his screen, I had to make him the host. And then after I did that, there was no chat option. So the possibility exists, I have to look into it more, that it might make sense if we're going to keep doing virtual programming for a while, which it looks like we will be, that the library get its own account. Because then we don't have to work with the town's limitations that they put on there, obviously, for legal reasons. So I will get back to you on that. And there will be a cost to that, though, because the free one is only, you know, goes off after 45 minutes. Mike Olson, the tech guy, is coming back on board. I'm really thrilled. He's been, we've been sending people to him that have been contacting us. And so he's, he's willing to give it a shot on Zoom. And as I said, we practiced for close to two hours yesterday, or the day before, maybe, to get a handle on what works and what doesn't work. So that's another thing that's leading me in the direction of thinking that we're gonna, we might have to get a new license for ourselves. He, he may be able to, he may be able to do workarounds for tech help, but for the larger events, it's, it's pretty confusing, so, and clunky, let's put it that way. We're switching Aging with Ease Yoga to an evening slot because attendance has been low. Attendance for yoga for back here is around four or five each session, which is respectable. That'll be in January. The Story Walk was completed yesterday just in time for the storm. Four DPW staff and Erin were out in the cold for two days. You've seen the pictures, it looks wonderful. And they're not buried, as you could see from the, from the picture, almost, but not quite. And the DPW staff did say they would be happy to snowblow the path for us. We're going to sing their praises. Other programs are planned for January, including the Return of Writers Workshop. Programming Youth International Storytime with the Newbury UK Library went well. Not as many attendees as they would have liked, but the everyone enjoyed. Yeah, that, that's not good grammar. But everyone did enjoy it, including the kids. I believe Ethan with the town is going to put it up on the town's YouTube channel. I'll check with Katie today to see if that happened. And Katie, too, was switching her story time to late afternoon because attendance has been low. She's thinking she'll grab some kindergarteners after school. And I am looking at the MBLC CARES Act grant for virtual programming supplies and programmings. More on that at the meeting. I sent off a copy of that to everybody this morning. I, I think it will be a fairly low maintenance grant because it's pretty much primarily for programming. We are excluded from purchasing certain things like computers, laptops, and Wi-Fi hotspots if we don't comply with the Children's Internet Protection Act, which is a sneaky little way of getting libraries to do that. But we don't do that here in Newbury. The majority of libraries don't. But we may be looking at some podcasting equipment and some other things. So Katie is looking into all that right now. So I'll have more on that in the future. And then simply, if we do any kind of remote learning kits, which Katie is also looking at, and then simply just paying for programming is eligible for this grant. So we should, we should definitely be applying for that. And the date is December 28th, so that gives us some time. The closing, that's the beginning, the closing date is January 15th. Some more on that later. The staff, once again, workflows are turned upside down, and staff needs to pivot. Took us a couple of days to iron out the kinks, but we have our two-person bubble or cohort, as some other libraries are calling it. That, this wasn't specifically what the town asked me to do, but I had been hoping that I could have done it when we were still all working in the building, but it really wasn't doable unless some staff, full-time staff specifically, worked from home. And I have warned Tracy that with three on a team, we could find ourselves having to close to curbside with sick and vacation days. The, the other thing, though, is if we, we didn't, there's a higher likelihood if, that if one cohort goes down, we will still be able to offer services. If we all were in here and we all went down, we would definitely have to close the library. So it's sort of a six, 12, half a dozen the other. You know, one way or another, we may find ourselves with not enough staff to open the building, and I say to curbside. But I think this way makes a little more sense. We'll probably have a better handle on this in January. So my team is Jane, Jean, and KD. And we're in the buildings Tuesdays and Fridays. Erin's team, Marcia, Erin, and Katie are in the building Wednesdays and Thursdays. The curbside is offered just one to five on Wednesday because Katie can't get here until 1:00. Curbside is also offered on Saturdays, 10:00 to 2:00. And the other day, staff works from home. Tracy asked for everybody to submit to her what tasks they'll be working on. I submitted them all, and she was good with that. Friends and volunteers, Erin's fundraising idea that most of us thought would go nowhere, including the friends. As I said here, I'm happy to say we're enormously wrong. I think there are 35 trees on the window and close to $750 raised with absolutely no effort. So everybody is absolutely thrilled. Cards will go out today to all volunteers and the friends board with a $10 gift card to Panera, signed by the staff. This is what we did with the budget that was allotted last year in gift and donations that usually goes to a holiday luncheon, but this year, we did gift cards. And we will also send cards to Fred Davis and Heather Davis, our cleaners. And that's it, the director's report. Any questions on any of that?
I don't think so.
Check, make sure I haven't heard back from, nope. So I've got the new staffing and scheduling changes here. I've kind of laid it out already. I did want to say that, to mention also, I forgot to in my report, that we were a little nervous that home delivery services were going to go away. I, I had spoken with John Lucy, the emergency management chief and the police chief, and told him, you know, that we had been doing it, and I wanted to know if with the new requirements, staffing and working from home and all that, if this was still going to be an option. So Chief Lucy is very, is putting it together a lot of documentation for things, which, which is good. I think it makes communication more, definitely more clear and expectations more clear. But we did have to wait a couple of days. I submitted the documentation on it. And, but I nudged him Wednesday, I think, and asked him, because Jane goes every Friday, and we needed to know if this was, you know, what she could tell her, her people. And thankfully, it got approved. So she will continue with home delivery. She's gathering the books for it right now. She has to be even more careful than she's ever been. She really has to make sure, well, she always has her mask on, but really try not to go inside any homes. Really try to leave everything outside. So I'm gonna have one last talk with her before she goes. I think she leaves at 10:30. The COA van driver, however, is resigning. So if they don't find somebody right away, yeah, I'm not sure where that's gonna leave us. So stay tuned with that one. I think that's about all, unless anybody has any questions about the staffing and the schedule.
My only question, I'm assuming, having heard nothing more, that the several members of staff who have been feared exposure to COVID, everything's turned out fine?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry if I didn't get back to everybody on that. Yes, Katie and her whole family tested because, as I think I said, her kids had been exposed. But yes, they all, took them a while to get tested because it was right, right after Thanksgiving. But they were all negative, so that, that was really good news. But this, you know, this is what, one of the things that is leading other libraries, because other libraries are now rolling back as well. Because they are, and Andover, they're putting together three cohorts because they have enough staff to do that. But their whole children's department got decimated because the whole department had to quarantine. So this is the reasons we're doing it this way.
And I think we can assume that this is gonna last a while, that, that, you know, we're now dealing with the post-Thanksgiving surge.
Yeah.
Doing well have the Christmas surge.
Right. Exactly.
Still changing their behavior sufficiently to prevent.
I know. I originally thought, you know, okay, January, February, March, we'll just plan out. This is probably what we'll be looking at. But I've noticed that a lot of places that, you know, like, well, gyms, I don't know where that's gonna land. But even other libraries are all saying till January 8th, you know, hoping that this is a temporary thing. We'll get through the Christmas surge, and then we'll be on some kind of, you know, level playing field where we can have people in the building again. I have no idea. So, you know, we'll see.
It's gonna be a while.
Yeah.
We went away for a week to upstate New York, not visiting particularly anybody, but to scrape wallpaper. And we had to quarantine and then get tested.
Yeah.
Back to working off. In some places, to try and get tested was days and days of waiting.
Yeah.
We had good luck at Convenion MD and Newbury Port. But another place had people standing in line at 5:00 a.m.
Yeah.
We tested negative.
In the future, Lawrence General, it's what everybody here has used, is really quite good. You, it's a drive-up. Sometimes you do have to wait, but you're waiting in your car. And they, Katie and her family got the results back the following day. They got turned away the first day because they didn't get there quite in time, and they reached capacity. But then the next day, they went, and they got the results the day after that. So, you know, you can.
We went down on Saturday and had the results by Tuesday morning.
Yeah. Yeah. Still room for improvement, that's for sure. So I think, I think that's it for staffing and scheduling. And we can move on to the FY22 budget, but there is really very little to say. I have not heard, gotten any guidance or heard anything about it yet. We are able to take the training for the online portal where we submit our requests this year, that where everything got a little weird last year, and we ended up not being able to use it. This year, we're, we're going to do the training again, so I'll probably work on that tomorrow. But, and I text, or I texted, I emailed Tracy last night just because I started getting kind of panicky because usually by now, we're deep into the request, and it's due like just before Christmas. So I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed an email or missed some kind of communication. So I emailed her yesterday to make sure that that's not the case. I think it's probably that with the state budget getting so delayed, everything is delayed. I will point out that the state aid, that state aid document that Dick sent around never got to directors. Or if it did, it went into my, my trash because I didn't get that. So if you all looked it over, it's pretty much just you're trying to soothe everybody's nerves that, you know, don't, don't get too worked up about state aid while still sort of injecting some requirements. So I think in January, when their board meets, everything will settle out a little bit, and it'll be a little bit clearer. But basically, Dick Raven, I'm sorry, I didn't get back to you about your question about 5%, but with, with the disproportionate cut. But yeah, it's always been if the library is cut more than 5%, that's considered a disproportionate cut. This year, they're increasing that to 10%. For FY21, we're good. We're in better shape than a lot of libraries because we have not been cut. For FY22, who knows? So it's, you know, the two years going side by side, we'll see.
Well, it's interesting. We're in a financial crisis all over the country. On the one hand, the libraries are getting more in demand for certain types of services. As a result, you know, I looked at the stats, you know, all that learning that the, you know, you know, like a huge increase over the last year, the training videos and stuff like that. I think that's gonna be the model from now on, from now on, you know.
Right. And the, the thing that I didn't see in that document was anything about curbside because for la, for last year, they, they didn't let us count curbside as service, as being, as hours being open to the public. Oh, there's Dick. Hello? Are you unmuted, Dick? I can't tell. Can you hear us? You can't. Okay, so now you can unmute. Uh-oh. Let me see if I can unmute you. No, I can't.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome to the meeting.
Are you done?
Nearly.
Oh, good, good. I, I was timing it. Apologies. I'm on a different timeline, so. Go ahead, continue. I'll, I'll just sit here and drink my coffee, which I was doing.
I thought maybe you were out shoveling snow.
Oh, no, no, that was yesterday. Sorry about that, folks, so, no, go ahead.
Okay. It happens.
Yeah, it has.
Okay, so I guess we were on state aid. So that was that, the statement or the point I wanted to make about the disproportionate cut. I also wanted to mention that this is new, last couple of years. You can count up to 10% of your materials budget if you purchase patron-driven hardware. So that will work for us this year because we do need two new patron computers. Assuming patrons will be in the building within FY22. So that can count toward materials. So that's very helpful. But I still don't have a very good handle on how much they would like us to contribute to materials. I've put us at, at 17%, which is the lowest we've been because of the increase in our budget, which then means that we have to spend more on materials to meet the percentages. But there will be a lower state aid award based on that 17% as opposed to the 19% we've been meeting for quite a few years now. So that's how that plays out. If you don't, if you get, bring your percentage of municipal funds spent on materials lower, then you get a lower award. It's all prorated somehow. It's a kind of a confusing process. But I thought that document that Dick sent, that, that confused me even more than I've ever been confused by anything that I've read on, on state aid. So like I said, I think more clear direction will be coming out in January, hopefully in time for the budget request when their board meets, which I believe they said was January. So that is that. And then as far as FY22 budget, I, you know, I'm assuming that Tracy will just say level fund it again, in which case, there's really not much work to be done for the request. If she says, ask for what you need, you know, I'll probably submit basically the same one I submitted last year. Or third worst-case scenario is she could say, submit it with a 10% cut or a 5% cut. So that all remains to be seen, and I have a feeling they're, they're trying to figure that all out, which is why I haven't heard anything. Any questions on the budget? All right, so I think I already mentioned, actually, the CARES Act, CARES Act grant. So does anybody have any questions on that? I probably already asked you. I'll keep you posted. We probably shouldn't meet maybe the middle of January because I assume by then, there'll be more budget stuff coming up. And, and I can probably give you a rundown on what it is we'd be asking for with that grant. And, okay, so meeting with archival advisor. Jane and I met with a lovely lady. She does the archives for, I think, Ipswich and Amesbury. So I think she works as kind of. So I think she works as kind of a consultant with their libraries. And she really knows her stuff. So she agreed to meet with us this past Monday via Zoom. And she just gave us, because Jane was feeling very stuck. She's done the inventory, which is handwritten at this point. She'll have to make that more official and actually type it. But she just, she felt like she'd gotten to a point where she really didn't know where to go next. So this woman was very, very helpful. And she's going to put together some ideas. She was very, she's good friends with the woman who came in and did that study with us a few years back, the roving archivist from the Mass Historical Society. So I said to her pretty much that my two goals with the collection really are, well, I'd love to do all kinds of things, but to keep it simple would be to figure out what needs digitizing and getting up on websites, whether they be Digital Commonwealths or Massachusetts Archives. You know, just figuring out what's left, what the Historical Society of Old Newbury doesn't already have up there, what the Historical Commission doesn't have up there, and figure out what, if anything, from our collection would be appropriate to put up there. And the second one would be to engage the community with the local history collection, which is what a lot of libraries are doing now. And it's pretty clear, based on our success with the Newbury I Remember. And when I'm on Facebook, there are some people that still just really love to talk about the history of Newbury to work towards that goal of engaging the community with the collection and with basically not only the collection, but with local Newbury history in general. There, the possibility would exist to try and reinvigorate the Newbury I Remember virtually. I don't know how much interest there is in doing that or waiting until we can actually meet in person, which I personally think makes more sense. But if anybody wanted to continue working on that, Mr. Pasari, that might, that might be something for you to do in your spare time.
Okay. When I'm, that's what I was doing, Jean. That's why I was late for the meeting.
When you're sipping coffee.
Yes.
So, you know, just something to think about. You know, planning, like I said with Jane, right, you know, this is, with everything going on, this is more really a planning stage to see, to think about what we might be able to do when things, quote, "get more normal". So, you know, you can just maybe scribble down some thoughts about it.
Okay.
And I have to get ahold of Ethan to see what video we have from those events that we had.
Right.
Because I'm not sure they were there every time. So I have to get a hand, because she was all excited when she heard we had actual video of members of the community talking about local history. She thought that was great.
Well, Ethan wasn't the one that actually did the video. It was that the young lady who, I think, has moved on at this point.
Right, right.
But it was all town equipment, so.
Right. So I'll get a better handle on that.
I know I watched part of one on the town website.
Okay. On the website or on the YouTube channel?
I think, no, I don't think they did it through the YouTube channel.
Was it on the TV channel?
I don't know about, I don't know about the town YouTube channel. I mean, it could have linked me from it, to it, from the town website, but I went down.
Yeah. Yeah.
Vague memory is it was a YouTube video, but I didn't go. I went through the back side door, not the front door.
Okay. All right. So that's that on the archival meeting. Anybody have anything else to say about that?
Nope.
All right. So old business. Unfortunately, I have some bad news, and that is that we did not get the Nade grant this year. No reason was given, which I thought was a little weird, but I'm going to assume that the need is just so great in other areas of the community that they didn't, they just couldn't give it to us this year. So it's a very good thing that you all had already determined to pay for this from state aid. So thank goodness for that.
Wow.
Yeah, well, last year, it was an explosion, right? We didn't get one from them last year because of...
It was the year before that.
Yeah.
Last year, we got it for painting the community room and all that, which hasn't happened. But yeah, it was the year before that. So, you know, they're doing good things, so. And then the story walk, which Dick Pasari, I don't know if you saw the pictures.
I did, actually, while I was drinking my coffee, I saw the picture. Yeah, the two pictures. Yeah, very nice, Jean. Yeah.
Don't say very nice.
I had my phone muted. And so when the text messages came through, I didn't have the phone with me. And therefore, I just happened to pick it up about a half hour ago and saw that I was a half hour plus late. So again, to everybody, my apologies, so.
Like it's never happened to any of us.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Makes us all feel better. Yes, so...
It's been all rough on trying to fill in for you, too.
Oh, no, no. That should have been, that should have been an easy task. That's, those aren't big shoes to fill, I can assure you.
So it looks lovely out there. I told everybody, Dick, the DPW, no, they want to, they agreed to snow blow it. They have not yet. I'm sure it's at the bottom of their list, but...
Oh, no, I'm sure. That's good, good.
It might be, I said to Erin, it'll probably be the next day or the next day when they...
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't think you're gonna have a lot of people, you know, out and about today looking to go, you know, doing a story walk, you know.
Exactly.
Maybe you will, I don't know. Maybe on their snowshoes, who knows?
I, that's what, actually, we were saying the other day that maybe we should hand out snowshoes to people. But the first one, I think there was a snafu with, I think they hit some ledge. So when they cut the pole, I think they cut it just a little too much. So the first one is really quite low. It'd be perfect for little people. But the others all seem to be the proper height, so. But it is, it's just, it really is pretty before the snow and after the snow. It just, it just, it looks like a wildlife path out there.
Good, 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 you know, good job, Erin.
No, unbelievable.
Yeah.
And Jean, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, is, and I am sorry, I do not subscribe to our local paper. Is the newspaper?
Yes, Erin and I are actually meeting after this meeting, or after Fred comes, actually, to hash out a timeline and publicity. Yes, we'll definitely get the paper here and really make a big splash over it. I may even send pictures to Jane Yolen, the author.
Such a good idea.
Good, yeah, yeah.
She lives in Western Mass and I think, I have a feeling she'd get back to me on that.
Oh, good, yeah.
And then we have the Owls in December. Not the real, not in person, but virtually.
I wonder, I think, Alex, weren't your articles, or at least one of your articles, was from the Globe? I wonder, because the Globe has run stories like this, you might want to reach out to them.
That's true.
For continuity, and this is what communities around Boston are doing. Anyway, just a thought.
That's a great idea. Yep, great idea. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That was, was that Globe North, Alex? I'm trying to remember.
I think they just have a local section now in the Sunday Globe. I don't think, they don't distinguish not the south.
Oh, it's just local, right, okay.
Metro.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's like a mass wildlife organization that has a publication because the owl connection would be interesting.
Yeah, and a lot of them, too. Yeah. Yeah.
You can tie to the virtual Zoom about owls and, you know, that's how I would do that one.
Yep, no, that's great. Everybody loves owls, that's for sure.
Except mice.
Except mice, yeah.
That is true.
The other way around.
Um, so I think that's all I've got.
Okay.
Anybody wants to add anything?
You need things signed this morning.
I do.
Okay.
At 11 o'clock, will you still be sipping coffee then?
I'll still be sipping coffee and I'll try to remember to come up.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, are we adjourning?
Move to adjourn.
Hey, motion made and seconded, all in favor. And everybody have a wonderful Christmas, a happy new year, be safe, and just enjoy the differentness of the season, you know? Yeah, it is a challenge, so. But be safe and we'll gather again in sometime in January.
Oh, do you want to set a date? Yeah, we should set a date, sorry.
And I'll definitely write it on the calendar with the time. The memory doesn't work quite the way I thought it used to, so.
You were just in a different zone, that's all.
No, I was doing, I was trying to do it for memory. I didn't literally, I did not write it down. Like, I knew it was today and I just, in my mind, it was 10 o'clock, so. Oh, well.
All right, so Jen or...
Yeah, what's it looking like?
Do you want to say January 15th at 9:00?
Is there any...
Blast it out.
Is there any way we could do it at 9:30? Not to be...
So Dick can have more coffee?
Right, that way we'll make sure Dick actually shows up. No, but, is that possible? I'm totally teasing. Is it possible?
Sure, if it works for you.
It's just, it's better. I have things going on earlier in the morning that 9:30 would be better.
And it's not sleep that's going on, it's just...
Oh, no.
And no, as a mom, you've got a million things to do before.
No, no. Unfortunately, not.
Yeah, I know. Okay, sure. So January 15th at 9:30.
At 9:30. Excellent.
Okay.
Write that down in your calendar.
I just wrote it down.
Good job.
I just have to remember to look at it now. The second task.
Well, Dick, you can put, I don't know if you put dates into your phone calendar.
No, I don't, actually.
Okay. Because you can actually put an alert on your phone.
Yes.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to learn how to do it.
Maybe that, maybe that's a New Year's, not to micromanage your life, but maybe that could be one of your New Year's resolutions.
I've been resisting some technological advances, and that's one of them. But I was not, look, based on this experience, it looks like I have to step off the line.
No, you don't. No, you absolutely do not. Resist all you want. I'm a big, I'm a big fan of resistance.
A big handwritten sign that said, "Trustees, 9:00 on my TV".
Well, you know, and obviously, Jean sent out the agenda and I obviously didn't look at it closely enough. I said, "Okay, I've got the agenda." So I looked at the agenda items and never looked at the time or anything, so, oh, well.
We're giving you a hard time, it's fun, too.
That's okay. It's, I have, I have three children and grandchildren, so just get in line.
There's an old Russian proverb that says, "He lies like an eyewitness." Our memories are completely incorrect often.
Yeah, no, it's, and I...
You were in the groove, we were meeting at 10 for...
Right, exactly.
Well, that's, that's what it was, you know, for me, anyway, you know.
So changing, that's why I had to put a sign up because it wasn't part of my...
No, good idea, good idea, you know? And I, my wife does that all the time. She sticks little notes here and there, you know, so that she remembers or takes out something that would be out of the ordinary. And when she sees it, she knows that, ah, okay. Something, it triggers something for her that something has to happen, I don't know. And she keeps telling me I have to write things down. I guess I do.
No worries, no worries. All right.
All right.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Bye.